...call to order the February twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, City of Statesboro City Council meeting. We will begin by asking Councilwoman Sam Lee Jones to lead us in our invocation and pledge allegiance to Councilwoman Jones.
Hello, sir. All right. State Department wants to thank you, the creator of the universe, who just woke us up today, allowed us to come into this council chambers to sit down together, reason together, and thank you for the wisdom, the courage to make decisions for the benefit of all our citizens, those citizens and our guests. Together, we just want to say, thank you, Lord. Just go forward, doing what you do best, serving in the favor of the Son and Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Praise the heavens to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move to agenda item three, and I will say that I may end up slipping out early, in which case Mayor Proten Chance will jump right in there. Ms. Sue, do we have anybody that has time to make a public comment regarding an agenda item?
Yes.
Okay. In that case, we'll move to agenda item four. Agenda item four is our consent agenda. I would ask Council to please review the approval of minutes, of minutes that are being submitted, and then ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve, approve the Council's minutes and the executive session minutes. Second.
Do I have any discussion? If not, all in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now, agenda item five, consideration of motion to approve Resolution two zero one seven dash oh six, approving the naming of Freedom Way and Buckhead Drive. Mr. Chappell, you can cut the lights. No, it's Jason.
Good evening. Jason Bowles, very good fellow worship here. Staff's been aware of a conflict in the road names in State Street for a while. If you look at the map on screen, Road Number One is named Henry Boulevard, and Road Number Two is also named Henry Boulevard, and Road Number Three hasn't been named. So, we're seeking to correct this. We're recommending to extend the name of Buckhead Drive across Brandon Street for Road Number Two, and to name Road Number Three Freedom Way. Yeah, so, this is Statesboro, Crossson. At the top of the screen, left to right, is Brandon Street. The bypass is running north and south. Thank you, Frank. And the main road, Road Number One, is Henry Boulevard that loops around State Street for Crossson. Do you have any questions?
Are the folks that are oriented to those roads, said anything, do they have an opinion?
The man, the only, Road Three, excuse me, Road Three and Road Two will be, will be changed, and there's no one address off those two roads. I ran this through the county addressing coordinator. She doesn't have a conflict with these proposals, and so there shouldn't be any changes to any, any conflicts or any problems out there.
All right, so, my hand, your parents, questions? Jason. All right. In that case, do I have a motion to approve Resolution two zero one seven dash oh six?
Aye. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you so much, Jason. Consideration of a motion to abort a contract for the purchase of a combination super vacuum truck to Super Products LLC. So, this is the item that we had on our last agenda, and if we're going to go back and, if I recall, look at the process and come back and explain to us why you're bringing it back.
I mean, we're bringing this up again because the Adams equipment company needed some clarification. So, Marcos, who's engineering stormwater, and I met with Mr. Bowles, not our Mr. Bowles, but Adams equipment, Mr. Bowles.
Relation.
And we, the misunderstanding that he had is both his company and the company were recommending to have contracts within NJPA. His equipment is for a higher level, a higher specification machine, which they determined we do not need that level, it's cost a little bit more. Our fleet division likes the maintenance and serviceability of the model we're recommending, and the Adams equipment rep understood, we had a good conversation, and so we did have that to talk with him. So, with that being said, we're going back to our original recommendation of three hundred thirty-two thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars to Super Products LLC per the NJPA contract of three hundred seventy-five thousand is the budget for the design.
So, just so I understand, the bid that came in from the other bidder was the one piece of equipment that had specifications beyond what we needed?
Beyond what we determined we needed. Yeah, we did have both of them come out and do demonstrations, and for these co-op contracts, we don't go through the advertisement because they aren't being bid out by the person co-op. But I think his confusion was that we went out for a bid process, but we, both were viable, both of them were NJPA contracts, you just pick which level of machine you want, and for this item, this is one you need to listen to.
Okay. If there are no further questions, do I have a motion to abort a contract for the purchase of a combination super vacuum truck to Super Products LLC for NJPA contract number zero two two zero loan four dash SPL, the amount of three hundred thirty-two thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars?
Aye.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Second. Thank you. Public hearing, I did not, excuse me, public hearing in consideration of a motion to approve application RC seventeen oh one dash oh three, do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
To move.
Have say.
To move.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Public hearings. Right.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first request is for eleven West Inman Street. The applicant is the downtown Statesboro Development Authority, and they're requesting a rezoning from HOC, Highway Oriented Commercial, to R four, Highway Density Residential District, High Density Residential District, to permit construction of a new three-bedroom single-family dwelling. Staff recommended approval on this project. Planning Commission also voted approval four to zero. We had two commissioners staying, Mr. Rundan, who has a member, is a family member employed by the DSDA, and Commissioner Forman, who is also a DSDA board member. This property, you'll see on the site plan here, was actually one whole parcel, but it was divided by the road, believe it or not, and the top parcel was HOC, and that's the one that's going towards Main Street. Just so you're clear on that, it's this parcel here that we're in question, and this is the parcel here, that's the home for heroes for them, the development authority that they're working to rehab, and this one here, they've already demoed the property and is ready to start construction for a new home. Some photos here of the home they're planning on constructing. This was the home that was on the site previously that has been demoed, taken out, that was approved previously at the city council meeting. This is the site that sits today, vacant level. And this is the property that's next door to it currently on the top, and directly across the street, and of course, next door is the rehab property they have going right now. And I believe we have representation from the development authority here tonight as well.
Come on, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you, Mr. Neil. That is, this project is actually one that will be a part of our neighborhood revitalization, and is trying to bring homeownership back into downtown here. This is a partnership with Home Builders Association that has partnered with us to build a home in that area. So, basically, we're just trying to replace a house on that footprint, but we're going to do a home, and we're hoping that that would just step up to the redevelopment and improvement in that area. And also, just to follow up on that, the property next door is R four, as you can see, and zoning of HOC for single-family residential on that property, we're basically make that lot unbuildable, that's why we had to take it to R four. Set back requirements.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against this rezon application?
It's like a comment, it's definitely a improvement, it took down the old structure there, so we're looking for it to send a new house there. Soon, right? Served nothing.
Thank you.
Is there another further comments or questions as regards to people in the public hearing? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing on application RC seventeen zero one zero three?
Aye.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. And a motion to approve the application RC seventeen oh one.
Move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, one question about that, I apologize.
No, no worries.
I was noticing the tab in our packet, this will be included in the tab, wherever they do it there?
It is in the pad area.
And if, I mean, wherever they do it there, we get tax money off of it?
It would contribute toward, right, if we do, it will have more, the new increase in property taxes will go towards the tab, yeah. It's a good, that's a good thing for the tab.
Just hear it, just stay it for the record. Thank you.
Okay. We'll go to agenda item eight. Second reading in consideration of a motion to approve ordinance two zero one seven dash oh four. I want to remind Council that we heard this in our last meeting, and this is, I don't know if you can talk about it, but basically, we're adopting catered language that refers to and mirrors the catered language that is in the state alcohol license regulations. Is that not accurate?
That is accurate, Mayor.
Would you like to go ahead and get to that?
Yeah, sure. This is, this ordinance would, would change the definition of catered event in our, in the definition section of the city alcohol ordinance, and it would remove the, remove the requirement that the total cost of food and seed, the cost of alcohol at these, at these catered events. And there's also language put into the definition that will refer, refer back to the Georgia Code section and the Georgia Administrative Codes as to the requirements from the state for these catered events. In addition to that, the language in, from the pending phase, section one point eight on catered event permit, several provisions of that have been removed because they would be nonconforming, since we no longer would have that, that food requirement for the catered events. This would, what this, this definition in section would, would govern any sort of off-premises serving of alcohol by licensed caterer, and then that they would have to have a permit from the state, from the city, and it's probably through the proper net provisions to the, to the State Department of Revenue in order to, you know, find them in their state regulations.
Okay. Does anybody have a question for King or any clarification on that language for the ordinance two zero one seven dash oh four? If not, I have a motion to approve ordinance two zero one seven dash oh four. Do I have a second? Sorry. Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Agenda item nine, public hearing in first reading of ordinance two zero one seven dash oh seven, an ordinance to a man, section six, dash one nine, of the city's section of the ordinance on our alcoholic beverages. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
To move. Second.
Do I have any discussion? Not all in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. King, would you please introduce this line of course?
Yes, this is a, this is an amendment to the city alcohol ordinance as well, that it deals with modifying the procedure for the administrative hearings. Under the amended, or the proposed version of six nineteen C, what that would mean is that the mayor and councilmen will decide whether a violation has occurred, nor would the mayor and council vote on whatever sanctions would, the licensee would incur as a result of our violation. What we would do here is there would be an administrative judge that would be, that would be nominated by the city manager and approved by the mayor and council. The administrative judge would actually have the hearings for him or her to decide if a violation did in fact take place, and what, what the sanctions would be as a result of that violation. And so, all the language in six nineteen has been changed, there's been a lot of changes in the language, but the only thing that's changed in the, in the way it operates is the fact that the hearings are done before the administrative judge. Nothing changes as far as the notice, as far as the, as far as the look back, as far as what is to be considered, which would just be that the administrative judge, like I said, would be nominated by the city manager with approval of council and mayor in order to hold those hearings. And that's, that's what we're trying, that's what we were trying to do with that. And this did pass the alcohol advisory board four to one last Monday, February thirteenth.
Were you here for that meeting?
Yes.
Do you remember what the one, neighborhood, what their reasoning was?
It was more along the lines of having six people decide, it's basically one person decide, so in a bench trial, a jury trial, that's what it was.
They like six people to sign.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Just curious what they want to change.
I'd like to ask for one clarification. Okay. So, just so folks understand that may be interested in this topic, the administrative judge says, here's what I, I plan to be guilty of this violation, and here's what I think punished initially. That, that individual, company, a licensed owner, et cetera, can accept that, or say, I don't agree with that, I don't like the hearing from the council? That's not what this reads.
That's not what this reads. What this reads is that it would be the same appellate procedure that there is with, with mayor and council decides on sanctions, it would be pursuant to, to the Superior Court or county, instead of having it go to mayor and council in the, in the event of an appeal. It would just, like, the procedure's exactly the same as it was before.
I thought we had talked about, I thought, and I won't ask my brother up here, my sister, just my brother. Did we understand, I understood that they were two counts.
Right.
They, that's what my understanding was.
Same here, also, you know, so.
I was under, I was under the impression that was because of the judge's ruling that said that we're ultimately responsible, so it has to come through us before justice works.
Well, I thought it was that, but I also thought it was, it gave council that comfort level that if, you know, a constituent felt like, or a licensed owner felt like it was just a call, that it was somewhere to appeal without having a power law to go for. I don't know, do, what do y'all think about that?
And that is easily changed. In fact, I have a blue line version of that, that had instead of.
That was the only, that was the one, and I believe if you look, it's going to be up in six nineteen, look to the back, it was like six nineteen twelve?
That's correct.
So, I mean, that would be the one, one thing that I, I would like to see.
I agree.
Agreed. Okay, because that's, that's easily, thanks, most of it would, the appeal would get to the mayor and council instead of to the Superior Court, okay? That's correct.
I mean, and then.
As an interim step, anyway, yeah.
And then I like what this body says, I guess they can just keep up. This is a public hearing, so do I have anybody that's here to comment for or answer to comment on this particular ordinance, two zero one seven dash oh seven? And one thing too is, in, in the, in the administrative hearing judge, will hear the context of the violation, right, violating that particular. Hamilton.
That is correct. That's one of the provisions.
I just want to make sure I understand it's not just a random thing, it's like, I assess this, then it becomes. Okay. So, they'll be found like, and the planning is owning its options a little bit, but not the same way in which you understand what their feelings were when that, those stipulations were put on that particular candidate?
Sure.
Okay. Would you like to come forward?
I'd like to.
You didn't have your stake for the thing at gallery, come on.
I'd like to.
You're not setting a good example, Mr. Chappell. At the end of the council chambers.
That's in Statesboro. I was just thinking, with what Mr. King, I think, is saying is if it goes to a judge, and essentially, you don't like a decision coming from council, you're essentially set what again?
Yeah, but the, as I said, there's not going to be a whole lot if we have a good judge and it's reasonable, they're going to end up here. That's, that's.
I just figured anybody that would get the guilty would say, okay, well, I'd like to go front of council.
Well, again, they don't, well, here's the whole thing, it's like anything else, let's say that you're assessed a one day suspension, I'm just tossing that out, they're out of mind, and they come in front of council and say, I don't like it on one day suspension, I think that's ridiculous. So, okay, council, what do you think? Well, I think that's going to be two days. There's a waste of time, council.
I don't know if I'm for it.
I mean, you would probably be taking a little risk doing that, and so that's the hope, is that you just find a reasonable, and they make a very reasonable judgment. People don't end up here, they're like, okay, one day is.
I don't know, we also want to. I don't know if it's one way or the other, I was just thinking that might be what everybody would say if you, you know, hey, I'm coming, you'll see now, let's try, try this again.
Well, I mean, that's their right to do so, but hopefully, we'll have good, good operations going on down at that level, and they won't see the time to waste council's time by doing that.
But, yeah, no, I think the step of coming here is to ensure you that you're treated fairly by the judge, and if not, you have a panel of people up here that can hear your case and say, why you think you were treated unfairly by the judge? As opposed to having to get a lawyer to Superior Court to do that, take it a lot more expensive to do that than standing up there.
Absolutely.
Well, so, hopefully, this personal license has very good judgment, and if you keep going up here thinking they don't overturn it one day or two days, they're going to find out soon, like, this was not.
Okay. Yeah, I was just interested.
It isn't going to overwhelm, I would, I would think.
And I, and I don't think our judge is going to be, who's that, hanging judge out with? Roy Bean? I don't think they have Roy Bean in our.
See, they'll give you, they'll give you thirty days, or if they come up here and you tell them, they'll be unhappy. No. Now, the whole point is to try to make it as fair as possible and to not burden the city council with, with repetitive stuff over and over that can be taken care of in a more administrative fashion. That's the game plan. But we've had game plans before, haven't we, Al?
Yes, ma'am.
So, anyways, anybody else have anything they'd like to say regarding ordinance two zero one seven dash oh seven?
I have, so, 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 King, is that going to be on the record, then? I mean, so, so whatever transpires during that hearing before the judge, is that the spark coming, that's what they move on, or can, can that expand from there?
I think having an evidentiary hearing before the mayor and council would, would not, wouldn't be necessary, because if this, if what would be necessary is a review of the opinion written by the administrative judge and the sanction, sanction right.
Most findings of fact.
Right, findings of fact, that could say, I'm right, having that before the judge is a great idea, to y'all, if that's the grade.
As long as we get good written conclusions from the judge.
Right, and there's a provision.
If it's a one, if it's a one sentence, guilty one day.
And also, the language is going to have to be changed, because it says that the minutes of the, of the meeting can be used as the opinion. Obviously, if we're going that route with the council and mayor, mayor was reviewed, that provision will have to be struck so that the judge would actually have to write a written opinion as y'all do review.
Sounds good.
And that's easily done.
Okay.
So, just come back forward.
Right, and I'll have it all corrected based on what we discussed this evening.
Shouldn't be much, though.
It should.
Couple of sentences, okay?
One review.
Sorry, I had to call you out on that one, but I thought I was let out, and I don't remember that being what we said. Okay. Does anybody else want to speak about this as a public hearing phase? If not, do I have a motion to close the public hearing, ordinance two zero one seven national seven?
Aye.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, do we want to have any further discussion? Or we don't, because it's first reading, so anyway, we'll not be asked for a motion today. All right, if that's the case, we're going to move on to agenda item ten, other business from city council. I actually have like, four things, or whatever, does anybody have anything they'd like to bring forward? All right, number one, and I'm going to ask Councilman Yell, if he happens to remember, better than I, but they had, and Robert was there, Randy was there, I think I got everybody from the city at the leadership retreat. Did I get everybody? Okay, so, December.
Frank, how many did you forget?
Well, don't you just hide behind a few, just kind of?
I actually think I recall the meeting.
Yes, he did, he did have three speeches, yes, he did. City Chamber of Commerce, Statesboro County Chamber of Commerce have a leadership retreat last Friday, and several topics of interest came up, which I just wanted to report a little bit about, which will affect us, and I will say that I don't feel like it anymore, in fact, just in a bad way, I think it was very good things. And again, I want to ask my colleagues, if I leave something off, if you think it's important, please jump in. They talked about a lot of different things, but some things kind of bubbled up to the top. One of my thoughts was very interesting, was the soon-to-be beginning widening of Highway sixty-seven and the four lanes. So, major project, and who picked up on the day, because I had stepped up for a second on when that's going to start.
Eighteen.
And, yeah.
Yeah, like you say, eighteen and nineteen.
It was just very fast.
So, it's going to be a big deal, it's going to be a pain for everybody that commutes down Highway sixty-seven, but just think about bringing those four lanes in, I mean, I don't know how many of y'all go down early in the morning down Highway sixty-seven and don't bother passing anybody, because you're in a line of vehicles, it's just straight on, and coming back, so that's going to, that's going to be a big deal for our city, I think. That was one of the things that came up. Another one that came up was they talked about the horse arena, and we've talked about and heard about that ag arena for literally eight years, ten years, you're right, and now it is about to be a bust.
Two thousand three spot?
Maybe.
I think they said eighteen or nineteen years.
It's been a long time.
Nineteen ninety-seven spot?
Can I just say it takes them forever to everything.
A lot of horse training.
Can I just, can I just talk that out?
I don't even mean it.
I don't think I'd admit it now. Anyway, so, the diagram that they gave or showed was really interesting, they're going to have the main horse arena, which I think is sixty thousand square feet, pretty, then they're going to have a training arena, which I want to say this, it was twenty-eight thousand, don't quote me on any of this, because I'm just breaking these numbers out of my head, and then they're going to have a paddock, and then an area where campers could park. So, if you think about it, right in one little area, you're going to have, you know, the horse arena, you've got Paulson Stadium, this there, there's talk of, and I'll actually wrote a little post about this, a potential coliseum that may be in that area to do a feasibility study, the university has commissioned athletic foundation, not the university, be very clear, has commissioned a feasibility study for a coliseum into three different locations, and, you know, the numbers are what the numbers are going to be, we'll see what comes back in this day. And then, you know, there's going to talk of soccer stadium, chase up, with a very quick period of time, we're talking about major, major things being built to, to support the sports community here, and I think that's a huge, huge deal, I think that ag arena's going to be a big deal. Now, it's nothing to talk about, so that's on the way. Y'all, last week, we voted in, our last meeting, excuse me, to send a letter saying that we would be open to receiving money from the Georgia Department of Transportation. Anybody that wanted to give us to, to help, and they said they wanted to look at helping us in, within the city, and we took the two projects that have been there the longest, one of them had been in the longest was redoing the intersection where Fair Road comes into three oh one, you know, that.
Paulson's making it to.
Nineteen ninety-seven. It's like, you know, when you get my age, you have to actually literally turn the car around to look and see what's coming back up there because it's hard to get you that all around. And part of it was we had no drainage right down there, we were a little lost cricket. So, on February fifteenth, a letter addressed to me, the department stands ready to commit funding to assist with infrastructure improvements to South Main Street from Tolman Road to West Main Street, also known as the Blue Mountain Project. We've been informed that cities are in the process of pursuing an America's Best Communities grant to also help fund the project. The department will commit up to four hundred fifty thousand dollars, or seventy percent of the project, whichever is less, with construction cost. This commitment will go toward the construction of new sidewalk, curb, gutter, and drainage improvements along this section of South Main. Uh, requirements committed will be contingent of fund, now this part just, what it is, uh, from the city being awarded America's Best Communities grant. So, if the city is, if the city actually wins, and the city will win anywhere from one, two, three, three million dollars. Huh?
As best as I.
Yes, that's what it says in this.
Okay.
From Russell R. Mc Murray Commissioner of the Department of Transportation, George Department of Transportation, um, then that money would go as the match. The way that I read this, part of the money in winning would go as the match. I'm not exactly sure, that would have to be clarified. To be able to do those things, um, that's a lot of money.
Go to the pot.
Go to the pot. Um, unfortunately, I did not see anywhere in this letter about our intersection.
Oh, I'm, still going to push for that.
Please say, please, we cannot let the intersection drop.
What, what was the area it said?
It just said along South Main Street.
It said Tillman, uh, West Main.
Okay. From Tillman Road to West Main Street, so from, it says Tolman, but they meant Tillman.
They meant Tillman.
Well, didn't leave it out, because I was.
It's, it's all the way from downtown down to Tillman Road, so.
It's from that to.
So, that's, no, or that's. So I'm looking at like a quarter fifty thousand for what they said there, things like sidewalk, drainage, and that would take care of a lot of that, the intersection, not as much more than that, so.
They didn't, they didn't. We tried, the letter they put up there said, we've been working on this intersection.
Somebody redlined that part.
Yeah.
No, no, don't make it red.
Since nineteen ninety seven. But, we don't have the money. But if we win, in the, if.
Committed.
Then they've committed up to four hundred fifty thousand dollars to do work on there, so, you know, I think that's, that's more. So, it makes that winning all more important. So, that's that one. I also want to give y'all an update, the city of, there's a, maybe a different question, I'll tell you. City of State's brought attorneys in the Michael Gatto case went to court on Monday. We, the city of State's brought, along with, what do you think, who else is on this? I'll come back to that more, but anyway, basically, asked for a stay in the Michael Gatto case while the insurance coverage lawsuit is underway. The insurance coverage lawsuit, I don't have, explained beautifully in the paper what that was, but basically our insurance carrier at the time, um, filed a lawsuit, and it filed up in the Levens District in Gainesville, Hall Cali, I think. Um, saying that they did not feel they had a duty to defend. The city looked Michael Gatto lawsuit. And that declaratory action, what they asked court was to look at, look at the lawsuit and look at the insurance policy and see if they did indeed have a duty to defend. So, the point of the stay request in court here on Monday was to see if the actual Gatto case itself could be stayed or appear in time while this confusion or question over insurance coverage or not could be settled. Uh, Judge Michael did not issue an answer to that in the courtroom at the time. He said he would come back and issue an answer. Thus, attorneys representing the city felt like that the lawsuit should stay until the coverage issue could be resolved in court, and the attorneys representing, uh, Gaddos said they did not believe it needed to be stayed. So, we don't know the answers to that. We will wait to hear what Judge Michael has to say. Judge Michael did say in court that he would have an answer at this point, he anticipated that he would move there at this point. I have not heard that he asked, um, but we shall see. So, that's where that stands. Um, I really don't know anything else, otherwise I'll just tell them, I'll wait to hear what truly comes back. And I think that's it. I'll be happy to answer your question, maybe those things are painful. But that's all I have. Do we have any other business from city council?
I did want to ask if anybody has noticed the improvements to, uh, to the special use variance that we gave a few months back? Do you have what that looks like now with all that just rubbish taken out? New side, new shrub, new.
Where are you coming out, on, on Fair Road?
On Fair Road.
What's that, I'm telling you there? It's the intersection, the Walmart intersection with the law, and express, you know? It does, it looks great.
Are you talking about on the door side?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, the, the.
It's not gray.
Yeah, gray and, uh.
Looks much better.
It actually matches the Ray Allen's property across the street and that brick and the way he did the sign, also. Anyway, I just think they did a great job. I'd like everybody to make sure you write back, looks a lot better, I think.
It does, it's a whole, it's, it's real, it's very nice.
Yeah, with the I sixteen expansion, was there, was there any talk of, 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 like, we do on three oh one from, by Denver?
But, can I clarify a little bit for you? What about I sixteen expansion?
I sixteen, we built the industrial park down there on three oh one, so if we, I'm sorry, I said I sixteen, I meant sixty seven. So, I'm based, uh, wide of sixty seven. Shouldn't look at, maybe try to piggyback on the structure that we're doing.
You know, I don't know that, well, let me back up. I guess it would depend on if you're doing a, you'd have to have a plan for the war schedule.
Yep.
And that may be something that's worth talking about. You know, as we look in strategic planning, you know, the cost to, to us to get the, out to the industrial park laws, it was over six, about seven, seven million to do that by the time South said it. So, that's something to think about. The Bradley track, you know, is out there. It's that big industrial, that big, not industrial track now, but there's still talk about that. In fact, that was one of the topics, interestingly enough, this is a good lesson in civics right here. Uh, one of the topics that Phyllis, the, uh, president of the Chamber of Commerce has had to ask Benji Thompson, who's director of the building authority of Villa County, to get up and talk about the Bradley track, which is a massive track, good for sixty seven, sixteen, was privately now that they're trying to resettle for an industrial park. Well, rightfully so. All of, um, the county commissioners got up and left, and they were five of them there. They have four of them. They went out, the hall, I went out there and went, because I almost had county commissioners talk about it. But they literally separated off in a different spot because they felt like that would not, they should not be in the room and hear an argument for something that they're going to have to go help. That argument for in presentation about should be done in commission chamber or something, and that was, you know, I thought that was the right thing to do, so it's having it. I think everybody was surprised, but they got up, off, they went out and separated out hallway while that presentation was given, so. I think that is something to discuss, Phil, upper. We need to look at how we can maximize in some way, shape, or fashion four lane of that road. It's going to be a big deal.
Me and it, I notice that, though we're simplified, that it can be expensive to do, it's sometimes, so.
It's got you twice.
Exactly. So, they're already going to tear it up, and they're going to have plenty of, putting it out there, why, why can't you figure it out? But that's going to be, we're going to have to talk with county, we're going to talk with DOT, that's the, the entire, we don't have enough money to throw, throw type on it. No, we're just wanting to do.
No, that's one of the things that, you know, in, in having those conversations when I talk to, to DOT, what is their appetite for us running by Mother Lane Road? I don't know. It may be fun, I hope. So, that's a good point. So, probably if you think about it over the next few weeks or whatever, maybe we can find out and look at more about their timeline.
Yeah.
You know, where they're going to start, all those kind of good things. Because we didn't get, you're only given three minutes to speak, so a lot of details and stuff, work brought up, just, just kind of major points about the project, so I, I don't know. But that may be something to look into. Anything else? In fact, I'm done.
Cindy, I'll talk to you about the budget retreat dates.
Cindy West, Finance Director. Um, we are, need to set dates for the budget retreat in April. I will, we need to give y'all some dates, and I will come back and write on it at the next meeting. Um, Friday, April the fourteenth, Thursday, April the twentieth, Friday, April the twenty eighth.
Say it one more time.
Friday, April the fourteenth, Thursday, April the twentieth, and Friday, April the twenty eighth.
So we'll bring back that next time?
If you can go look for, if y'all have other suggestions of days.
Sure.
What was the second one, was it?
Thursday, April the twentieth.
Um, so after that, what's four twenty one? That happened, what was it, Friday?
Missed the minute.
Okay. Some people have other times, let's figure out.
Okay, well, uh.
You're good on the change.
Okay, I was wondering, so, maybe, should we just email, should we say, we're going to, let's see?
That's fine.
I'm not there with either Friday, so.
Even Friday works, maybe?
We'll just email again. There you go.
Okay.
But, let's try to email them, not in a week, so we'll go ahead and get that.
And just go, Jake, and the, any, to report that, any?
Yes, so we'll have it here, one day, we'll have it here in council chambers, what we've done for the last four, five years.
Okay. The other thing would be, I have a report from the property about a GOC program.
Yeah, and in addition to the, the money that the Georgia Department of Transportation, given the city, we received information on something they call, and it's a rule now, it's called a CHAMP program. I thought it'd be good for you to know about. I'm just going to read this for later, so I don't mess up on any of it. CHAMP stands for the Coordinated Highway Assistance and Maintenance Program. It's Georgia DOT's new roadside assistance and maintenance program for regions outside Metro Atlanta. CHAMP is a complimentary service funded possible by state dollars resulting from the Transportation Funding Act of twenty fifteen. Once full operational, CHAMP will staff by forty eight full-time operators and eighteen full-time dispatchers. Total of fifty-one branded custom fitted CHAMP trucks will patrol sixteen hours a day, we don't call it, eight hours, seven days a week. And here's what they will do, and these will be the highways that would affect us would be primarily Highway sixteen and ninety-five. And it would be they detect, verify our reports and provide assistance with traffic incidents to ensure safe clearance and efficient traffic flow on interstates, uh, remove debris and minor non-hazardous spills from the highway, assist with other incidents in tagging and removing abandoned vehicles, assist the Department of Public Safety and other unfortunate agencies in support of, identify, verify, and report maintenance issues for infrastructure property damage to GOC transportation management center and districts staff. And when feasible, provide assistance to borrowers needing, so.
How many of them are going to be down here?
It just gives you the numbers, but they'll be patrolling all of those that I mentioned, including, you know, seventy-five and eighty-five, twenty. There's some other small ones on the edges, so, it's a start.
Are these, uh, similar to the E-RO trucks?
That's, for what I, that's what I would envision them being, except for outside of the metro Atlanta area.
What does CHAMP stand for, you?
Stands for Coordinated Highway Assistance and Maintenance Program. That's all I have.
That's all I have.
Okay, and that, guys, do, I have a motion to enter into executive session.
To move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All favor, any discussion? All favor, please take my side, no.
All right.